Alrighty, we've got some folks in our board meeting waiting for it to start. We have a few trustees. Welcome Chair Holland. We have Trustee Smith and Trustee Old Person currently in the meeting. I'm speaking now to test sound for MCAT. MCAT, if you're doing okay, maybe just shoot me a chat in the Google chat. Also, a quick reminder for anybody who's on the call that if you use the Command D or Control D keystrokes, that will easily mute and unmute your microphone. And MCAT, thanks for the sound check.
And Hatton, I found you. I'll mute me now.
Excellent. We are live streaming and we are recording, so I'll leave it to you when you want to start the meeting and I'll be ready to share the screen with the flag.
And will we be able to do that? You'll keep track of the mics and I'll keep track of chat?
Yes, we can do the same procedure. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll go back to mute.
And welcome, Trustee Kendall.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, is that you Jen?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll go back to mute myself for now. Hatton, would you mind just reminding people to be on mute as we start the meeting? And how to unmute if you're on a computer? And how to unmute if you're on a phone? Thanks.
Sure thing. So, welcome to the trustees' meeting. We'll get started briefly. You'll hear this reminder several times. Please make sure that you remain muted until you need to be acknowledged for public comment. Remember that your camera is on as well. And if you are moving around or you set your device in a funny place, you might want to turn your camera off. If you are joining via the telephone and you need to unmute yourself, you are going to press star six on your keypad to make that happen. This meeting is being recorded and it is being livestreamed.
Okay, and I do see that it is 12 noon, so I will go ahead and call the special meeting of the school board, MCPS School Board, to order. And number one on the agenda is call the meeting to order to welcome everyone who's participating virtually. And I will now take role call of the trustees. Trustee Decker, are you here?
Yes, I am.
I am here. Trustee Kendall?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Lorenzen?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee McDonald?
I'm here.
Trustee Newbold? Trustee Newbold? Hatton, Trustee Newbold and I somehow ended up in a different hangouts. And I took myself out of that and re-entered, so I think she might be alone in the other place. So if you want to maybe... Oh, thank you, if you can email her, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Same thing happened to me. I was forever trying to get in.
Right. I think, anyway, well, I think with Hatton's help, we'll get that sorted out and get Trustee Newbold to join us. Trustee Old Person, are you here?
I'm here.
Trustee Smith, are you here?
I am here.
Trustee Service, are you here?
I'm here.
Trustee Vogel, are you here?
I'm here.
Trustee Wake, are you here? Trustee Wake? I don't hear from Trustee Wake, but we do have a quorum, so we will go ahead and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Dr. Watson, if you could say the pledge for us, so we're not all talking over each other, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, forever.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just getting... Trustee Newbold and Trustee Old Person are in a different meeting, so hopefully we'll get them connected. So, the next item is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Are there any requests to change anything on the agenda? Seeing none and seeing no comments in chat, we will go ahead then and take public comment on non-agenda items. So, if you'll bear with me, I want to explain about public comment. So, today there are two items on the agenda, and we will take public comment on them as they are discussed by the board. We will also take public comment on non-agenda items at both the beginning and the end of the meeting. As was noted in the work session on Tuesday, there will be an agenda item in May on discussions concerning how to perhaps allow students to go to a graduation ceremony of some kind. But for today's meeting, that would be a non-agenda item. So, as to making public comment today on either non-agenda items or agenda items, and we're still taking minutes. If you want to make a comment, please state your first and last name. And if there is an unusual spelling, please provide that comment. And if you represent an organization, please identify that organization. We also ask you to keep any public comment to three minutes or less. One of the staff will be helping me keep time so as to ensure those comments comply with that request. And finally, so as to be acknowledged, if you want to make public comment on agenda or non-agenda items, if you are connected to the meeting and can type into the chat box "comment", please do so, and I will be looking in that box to see who wants to make public comment and will identify who should be speaking next. And then you would unmute your microphone. Or if you unmute your microphone as an alternative, Hatton will be looking to keep track of any microphones that have been unmuted so that person may make public comment. And for those on the phone, I think that unmuting your phone would be the indicator you want to make public comment. And I, along with staff, will make sure that we get to you as well. So with all of that explanation presented, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? I don't see any requests for public comment on non-agenda items in the chat box. Hatton, do you see if anyone's unmuting who's attending this meeting virtually?
There are no phone numbers that have unmuted. And for those that may be watching the meeting on the Facebook livestream, just a reminder, if you want to actually join the meeting to make public comment, there is a link in the Facebook comments for you to join the meeting live to either call in or click on the link. That's the only way you can make a public comment.
Thank you. So, that being said, we move to item number five, which is the COVID-19 planning. This is an action item. And it would be to approve on first reading of board policy... Approve at this, after one reading, not a first reading, but at one reading, Board Policy 1906 COVID-19. Superintendent Watson and Pat, I think it would be Superintendent Watson would be providing the background information. Is that correct? Or I don't know, I can't remember if I saw Pat on the call.
Yes, I will provide background and then Pat may want to weigh in with regards to anything related to student, counting student aggregate minutes and funding and all that stuff in case any board has questions.
Okay, thanks.
Let me start by apologizing for my mess-up on the Pledge of Allegiance. That's no disrespect, I apologize. Liberty and justice for all, is what I should have said. Sorry about that. My eighth grader reminded me that I messed it up. Thank you.
Give your monitors.
I think somebody needs to mute if you're not... All right. So, our first item today is a policy that, again, is one of the recommended policies from the Montana School Boards Association. It's a lengthy policy, but quite honestly, it mirrors some of the practices that we've already been doing in remote learning with regards to instructional minutes, proficiency, instructional settings. The one thing I would say is that it has quite a bit of pieces in here. I did modify some of the language, not a lot of it. I took most of it from the Montana School Boards Association. If trustees have specific questions about any piece, I'd be happy to answer. The reason I'm recommending this policy for adoption is I believe it will provide some flexibility for us, not only for the remainder of this year if we choose to remain in remote learning, but also for the previous weeks of remote learning that we've already had. So you'll recall that the governor provided flexibility under his plan with regards to instructional minutes and aggregate hours, which all is tied to our funding. And so if we remain in remote learning for the remainder of the year, this policy actually allows us flexibility with regards to counting instructional minutes and remaining in aggregate hours for the remainder of the year. And again, as the trustees know, that those particular points, they are tied to our funding. So it is important that we keep track of those items and have a policy that allows some flexibility. So with that, I think I'll stop and see if Pat has anything to add. I think he's on the call, but there's too many people on here, I can't see. And then also, any questions from trustees?
Pat, are you attending virtually?
Yes, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you. So I will be checking in chat to see if any trustees have any questions for Dr. Watson or Pat. And Hatton will be checking to see if any trustee is unmuting their phone or their mic. I don't see any questions coming in via chat. Hatton, do you see anyone with a question?
No, I do not.
So with that being said, in terms of questions, and I'm sorry for the rustling of paper, the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 1906 COVID-19 Student Instruction and Services after one reading. Is there such a motion? It looks like Trustee Decker has moved to approve the policy. It has been seconded by Trustee Old Person. Is there any board discussion? Either let me know in chat or let Hatton know by unmuting your phone or your mic. I don't see anyone asking for... Oh, Trustee Decker.
Thanks. We heard about some of these changes and were able to ask some questions of the superintendent about them, which made me feel pretty comfortable with moving right ahead. I do just want to make the comment that it's important to note that this policy may have implications beyond this current school year and that it's something we'll need to stay apprised of and in touch with because we don't know the duration of the emergency situation. And that the comment was made by the superintendent at our last meeting, that this policy, if it was in place at the beginning of a semester, would likely need to extend through at least a semester at a time so that all of us and people that are listening in are aware that that's the impact that this policy has and the timeframes on which it'll need to be revisited.
Trustee McDonald, did you have a comment? I wasn't quite sure what you had typed in. Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes, just a comment. We did discuss that we will be revisiting all aspects of the COVID-19 policies probably in May, in June, in July, and August. So I think that is the plan, to continually revisit these. So... Is there any indication that there's any comments from trustees via the mic system, Hatton? Hatton, is there any indication that any of the trustees have comments on the mic system?
Hey Marcia, this is Ray, and I don't see any comments from any other trustees on the phone.
Okay, thank you. So any public comment on this agenda item from any member of the public, either indicate in chat or by unmuting your phone, and we'll try to keep track of any public comments on this particular seconded motion. I'm not seeing anyone requesting public comment or to make a public comment in the chat box. Is there any indication, Hatton or Ray, that anyone, a member of the public, has unmuted their phone? Or mic, rather?
If you would like to make a public comment anywhere on the phone, please press star six.
Is there any indication anyone has unmuted their phone or their mic?
There's one in the chat.
No, no one has unmuted on the phone, but there is a comment from Laura Arnold.
I just saw that. So, Ms. Arnold, if you could state your first and last name for our minutes, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes and go ahead with public comment.
I just had, I appreciate you all for what you guys are doing for the schools and your considerations during this pandemic. But I do request that you take time and some research on what you... For the special needs children, such as possible, like, study hall sessions or something, especially for the kids that may need some extra help. That's all I ask and for consideration for that. Thank you for all that you guys are doing, especially in this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else either on the phone or joining us via computer who wants to make a comment, either indicate by typing into the chat box or unmuting your phone? And it looks like someone has unmuted their phone, is that correct?
Marcia, at this point, I don't see a phone line unmuted.
Oh, okay. It was just that someone other than a trustee showed up on my screen, but that may just be an anomaly. Okay. So, seeing no other public comment on the seconded motion, all those trustees in favor of adopting Board Policy 1906, please indicate by typing in chat "yes", or those who are on the phone, I think that is Trustee Vogel, unmute your phone. And so I will also remember to vote too.
Hello, this is Trustee Wake, I vote yes.
Thank you, Trustee Wake.
And Vogel votes yes.
Thanks. Let me just catch up. And that is unanimous as to all trustees, and we do now have all trustees present, just for the minutes to reflect that. Now we moved on to 5B, which is whether to consider declaring emergency school closure through June 30th, 2020. And we did have a lot of discussion about this during the work session, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Watson and Pat to describe what the recommendation from the administration is and what considerations you'd like us to know about in terms of making this decision. And we'll take questions and then we'll consider an action item on this topic. So, Dr. Watson, if you want to start first?
I will, yeah. Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks for everyone that's on the call and the meeting today. Really appreciate the amount of public participation. I understand that a noon meeting is cutting into folks' time, so I just appreciate you being here. I won't go into a lot of detail, but I do have a few things to clarify before I clarify my recommendations. So, I want to clarify a few things that we've heard since our work session. So for those of the public that weren't able to attend, we had a work session with the trustees on Tuesday night, and we actually talked about quite a few different considerations. But since that time, since Tuesday, we've even had more clarifications from our local health department. So I want to go through a couple of those, and I'll ask Linda Simon also to help me do that. Linda Simon is our lead nurse and lead healthcare professional in our district. So I'll turn it over to Linda here in just a second. But before I do that, one piece of information that I just want to clarify, and I believe it is relevant to the discussion that we had on Tuesday night. So we chatted briefly about our concern or consideration around the health department's role if we were to reopen. And I just want to clarify that because I do think it's important to the discussion. So, as you may or may not recall, we talked about what is the health department's role if we reopen. And many of you will likely remember from last spring when we experienced the pertussis outbreak. Obviously, we worked very closely with the health department during that pertussis outbreak. It's just a really important time and piece of the process. And we will likely do the same if there were a Corona outbreak in a school, whether it happens now or in the fall. We'd be working very closely with the health department. I want to make it clear that the health department's role is that they do the contact tracing. That is to say, once we've identified a confirmed case or once an identified confirmed case has been tested and is positive, the health department's role is they do the contact tracing. They decide which kids in school may be close contact, which family members are close contact. They contact all those people and address that, anybody that might be a close contact. That is their role, and they are willing to support us in that role if that were to happen now or next fall. What's a little bit different with this particular virus and this particular outbreak than with pertussis is when we were in pertussis, the health department was actually in the school with us, helping us with things like seating charts, helping us screen students for symptoms, helping us calling parents and recommending that students be tested. Currently, the way the health... Currently, the way the health department is staffed right now, they would be unable to help us in the school setting with some of those routines like screening students or calling parents or helping teachers track down seating charts and those sorts of things. So I just wanted to be clear on that because I think there was some confusion that perhaps the health department wouldn't be doing the contact tracing, and that is completely their role. They're able to do that right now. In fact, they're doing that right now in our community. But what they wouldn't be able to help us with is those in-school services, like they helped us with pertussis. So that was in our list of considerations. I just wanted to be clear on that. The health department also released this week some further guidance based on the governor's protocols under Phase 1. And so I thought maybe Linda Simon could just outline a few of those things that the health department told us this week, if Linda's on the call, and I believe she is.
Yes, thank you very much. What the health department has told us is that there's three things that the school district would need to have in place for the schools to open this month when the governor allows that to happen. And that would be screening students upon entry into the school or as they enter into the school. We would need to screen them for potential symptoms of COVID-19. Then obviously, we need to have staff that are trained to be able to do that. So that's a sufficient amount of staff in order to screen every child who comes into the school building every day. And then, of course, using the classroom teachers to very tightly use seating charts. And the reason seating charts are so important in this situation is that if someone is found to be positive at some point, whether it's a staff member or a student, it helps limit how many contacts that there are, which is extremely important. And then it also helps identify who those contacts are so the health department can do their contact tracing and be able to do it in a more targeted fashion and less staff and students would need to quarantine at home for those 14 days. So those are the three criteria that the health department added for students to open at this time. Are there any questions with that?
Any questions thus far for either Linda or Dr. Watson? I'll check in chat. Are there any indications that there are questions? Oh.
Oh, that's a, the question that I'm seeing from Heidi Kendall is what is the screen? And that's a very good question. And the screening is checking for symptoms, which the CDC has recently expanded from fever, cough, or shortness of breath to include, and I'm sorry, I actually don't have that list in front of me, but I'm going to go a little bit by memory, sore throat, headache, muscle aches, chills, shaking chills, and I think I'm missing one.
It's loss of smell?
Of course. Loss of, recent loss of smell or taste is the other one. So every student would need to be screened for the presence of those symptoms.
Are there any other trustee questions?
I had a question, trustee service.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, trustee service.
You said three protocols. I got that you need to do the screening and the seating charts. What's the third one?
Oh, it's not so much a protocol. It's just that there would be enough staff that would be able to do the screening. That the health department would not be able to do that screening for the schools. The schools would have to supply that staff to do the screening.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, trustee service. I didn't see your request. And trustee Decker has a question. Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I guess this is probably a question that I can imagine the answer to, but if the school buildings were at any point this year or next to reopen on a kind of a hybrid basis for, as some other districts around the state have done, to provide some amount of service to students even while most learning continues to happen remotely? If that were to happen, I'm imagining that these protocols of checking health symptoms and things, those would be in effect for any student who would be entering our buildings, even in any kind of very limited or hybrid state. Would that be right, Ms. Simon?
Any student or staff, miss trustee Decker?
Thank you.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's for all phases. Or, well, maybe it is for all phases.
That's what we don't know. I mean, we're in Phase 1, and the governor's plan has several considerations in Phase 1, and the health department has highlighted a few of those considerations in Phase 1. And obviously, when we move to Phase 2 or Phase 3, those could change. Trust, let's see, Chair Holland, I have a few other remarks that I want to put out there just in case there's more trustee questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So just a couple of things. I'll wrap this up quickly, but I want to make sure the trustees understand that, you know, that there was quite a few deliberations and considerations that went into my recommendation to remain closed for the year. And I just want to highlight a couple of those for you. I know we talked about this on Tuesday, but I want to make sure you hear a few of these. So one of the things that we considered if we were going to try to reopen on May 7th, one of the things we're concerned about is the short-term lack of available personal protective equipment. So as you're well aware, that's not just an issue for us. It's an issue for healthcare workers and everyone else. But if we're going to do screenings, which is going to be called for, we're going to have to have personal protective equipment for our screeners. So that was one of the issues. Also, there seems to be a lack of supplies. We've made an attempt to order, obviously, just like everybody else, order things like thermometers and face masks and PPE, but there seems to be a short-term lack of supplies that we could get our hands on in order to conduct health screenings. Now, obviously, we're going to continue to work on that as we move forward, but that would be a concern for us for May 7th. And then, of course, I mentioned this on Tuesday, but we have a lack of trained medical staff to cover every school building. So that was one of the recommendations from the governor's plan and from the health department would be to have trained staff on hand to conduct the screenings. In addition to what Linda pointed out, the other thing that has us, gives us pause is the current requirements on group size. So the governor said no more than 10 if you can't maintain social distancing. And then the health department said, you know, limits of 25. Even if you could maintain social distancing, you shouldn't have more than 25 in a group. Now, obviously, we manage that, shifting our students or maybe only having half the students in for part of the day or something like that. But that would be difficult, given just the few remaining weeks of school. Having those partial schedules didn't make a lot of sense to us. Also, it hasn't been mentioned here in Linda's report, but if we were to reopen on May 7th and then we had a confirmed case in any school, we would likely be required by the health department to close the school for three to five days. And just knowing that, it's just had us question, you know, does it make sense to reopen all 18 schools and then experience another closure with just a few weeks left in the school year? And then, obviously, any of this stuff, we're going to have to mitigate and account for next fall, and we understand that. But we're going to need to take our time with our staff to plan for safety measures and to plan for trainings for staff, and we believe that we need some time to do that. And so the final thing, I'll just say, as the trustees weigh this decision, this is not an easy decision. I would like the public to know and the trustees to know this was not an easy recommendation for us. We realize that there are difficulties with remote learning. It's not perfect for all, and I think we all agree to that, and there's ways that we can improve our skills around remote learning. But we had to weigh sort of the short-term benefits versus the potential risks. And in our mind, from the administrative standpoint, it seems like the potential risks far outweigh the short-term benefits of reopening. It seems like, you know, it's a lot less risky, given our current circumstances, to remain in remote learning and work on our remote learning skills and work on serving kiddos that may not be accessing remote learning or may having a difficult time to access remote learning. But that's the basis of our recommendation. What you'll see in the agenda is the actual recommendation that was provided by the School Boards Association. Basically, what this does is we're asking that the trustees, my recommendation would be that the trustees declare an unforeseen emergency, and this is a procedure that you have to do because as of May 7th, the governor is going to lift his emergency closure. So in order for us to remain in remote learning, the trustees have to declare an unforeseen emergency and declare school closure. That's what this motion does. One thing that this doesn't do, which I would encourage you to add to this motion, is I believe you need to add to the motion that you would also allow us to remain in remote learning for the remainder of the current school year. That wasn't in this motion, but it is an important piece. So with that, I will stop my comments and my recommendation and stand for any questions from trustees. Or from Isaac.
Yeah, we have student trustee Isaac Odegaard attending virtually, and then trustee Lorenzen has a question as well. So Isaac, do you want to ask your question first, and then we'll go to trustee Lorenzen to ask her a question that we can see in chat? But for those who aren't able to access chat, if you can ask that question. So Isaac, go ahead first.
Okay. I was disconnected for a little while, so I'm sorry if you covered this, but I was wondering if since the governor has, or will declare, the schools can go back? And we are not, would that require our school year to go into the summer at all?
Yeah, that's a great question, Isaac. I think what you're asking is if we decide to stay closed, would we have to make up those school days? We're covered because, up until May 7th, because the governor closed the schools. But I think Isaac's question is a great question. After May 7th, since it's no longer the governor's decision, but it's our decision, does that mean we would have to make up the school days? And Isaac, we do not believe we would have to make up the school days based on the declaration if passed by the Board of Trustees, the Declaration of Emergency Closure. In addition to that, the other policies we put in place around proficiency and instructional minutes and instructional time in remote learning, we believe we would not have to make up the days or the minutes. And we also believe we will continue to receive state funding based on those policies.
Okay, thank you.
And trustee Lorenzen, would you mind stating your question so those on the phone can also understand it? Thanks.
Rob, my question is whether we will have the option to have some limited use of our school buildings, as was suggested by the one caller, perhaps for special groups, even though we've signed this declaration?
Yeah, that's a great question. Some other school boards across the state have actually put that into their motion. If you'd like to do that, I think you're definitely, that's definitely allowable or maybe even recommended. I would tell you that we're already using our school buildings in limited capacities, for example, handing out lunches at some buildings. We've had staff members obviously accessing our buildings. We've had students come and pick stuff up on a very small basis. So we're already doing some of that. In my mind, that's more of an administrative, operational process. But obviously, we would want to look at that as well. We would want to support students in any way we can. It could mean that, that given some time and some protocol, that we might have one or two students come back in in small groups, either to provide extra help or to finish up a project, for example, in a CTE class. Any of those things, I think, are definitely something we're looking at. I think we would still do those things. I don't think it requires board action, but if you would like to put that in your motion, I understand.
Thanks. And Dr. Watson, could you run, tell me again the language that you recommended? And I'm trying to write down if a trustee does include language that relates to trustee Lorenzen's question, just so I have it in my notes, too?
Yeah, so the recommendation, I apologize, it's got a lot of language in it, and I would recommend everything in that language. The only thing that's missing there, I would just add a statement to the end of it that in addition, that Board of Trustees would allow our school district to continue with our remote learning plan for the remainder of the current school year.
I'm just making notes. Apologize. Any other questions from trustees before we address the action item itself? Trustee Decker, is that a question?
Yes, please, thanks. Yeah, my question is related to costs. And, you know, this is a decision that I hope that we are all making based first and foremost, of course, on the safety and security of not only our students and our staff, but the entire community. Having said that, though, it might be helpful in making the decision to understand what we're going to be dealing with long term, both as we consider parts of staying in remote learning that might be more expensive than operating under normal conditions, and also parts of remote learning that might require us to, I'm assuming that if we keep going forward, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to keep doing everything the same as we have been so far. We're going to try to keep adjusting and improving and getting services to kids that need them as best we can, which may require we spend money in new ways. So I'm wondering if you can, before we make this decision, just speak a little bit to the finances of this, one way or the other?
Yeah, that's a great question, trustee Decker. And I think it is important for us to keep track of some of these costs, and we have been doing so all along. And then we're going to have to think about projected costs going forward. We could give you some estimates on what it's costing us to provide, for example, the lunches via the buses. I mean, those are costs that we've already incurred, and we could give you those numbers. Another cost that might be helpful, just to put this into perspective, you'll recall that on Tuesday I talked about hotspots. So, you know, we purchased 100 hotspots to allow kids that didn't have internet access to access remote learning, and those 100 hotspots have already been accounted for, and we're going to order another 25. And just to put it in perspective, those 20 hotspots, I'm sorry, those 100 hotspots, in my recollection, were in the neighborhood of $20,000. Because not only are we paying for the device, but we're paying for a short, brief time of internet access through a carrier. So it comes with a cost of the device and the actual access to the internet. So I'm thinking that was in the neighborhood of $20,000, but Ray could correct me if I'm wrong. That's just an example. As we go forward, trustee Decker, we will look at other potential costs, the cost of personal protective equipment, the cost of masks. We ordered thermometers, although I don't think we've gotten them yet. There's a cost related to those. And so I'd be happy to share that. Apologize, I don't have that now, but I can share sort of a spreadsheet with the trustees at a future meeting with some of the things we've already spent and then also things that we project we're going to need to spend. And I would say some of those costs are tied to remote learning, and some of those costs are tied to if we reopen or when we reopen.
And I do see that Ray indicated that the information from Dr. Watson was correct. Any other trustee questions? I don't see any in the chat box. Are there, is there any indication of anyone on the phone who has a question, either Hatton or Ray? Oh, trustee Newbold has a question?
I do. Can you hear me okay? I was having problems with my mic on Tuesday. Okay, I'm going to forge ahead. I think one of the things that I was trying to get at with my question on Tuesday, Dr. Watson, was in taking the long-term view toward the fall and the fact that there's been a lot of discussion about a need for additional a need for additional planning for whatever might happen in the fall. We're, we're potentially including a piece in this motion that allows the remote learning to continue, but I guess my question on Tuesday was, is this, is the staff time that's necessary to plan for the fall? Is that something that's needing to take place now? Should, in other words, should we be curtailing some of the remote learning that's going on now to allow staff adequate time to plan for whatever may be coming in the fall? Or is that planning going on at more of an administrative level and we're comfortable with kind of where our services are at now, that if we had to assume this in the fall, that, that we're ready to do that?
Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit trustee Newbold's question, just so everyone makes sure they heard it, but what she was asking is when we do reopen, whenever that happens, obviously a lot of planning is gonna have to go into that. A lot of preparation, a lot of training for our staff. And the question was, should we curtail the remote learning that's going on right now? Maybe, maybe cut it off a little early so that we can provide time for our staff for training and, and those sorts of things. And actually trustee Newbold, that's a great question. It's something we've been discussing administratively. Right now, we've got a restart team already up and running and they're looking at plans. We've looked at schools across the country and other, other countries for that matter that have restarted school. We've looked at their plans. So I think we know what has to go into that planning process. And, and we're starting that right now at the administrative level. We understand that that's also going to impact staff and will require some training. And, and we're ready for that. We haven't rolled out the training plan yet, but I think we will have some need at the end of the school year for some training for staff once we're ready to do that. I also think we've been discussing too, at some point, stopping the, the new learning that might be happening under remote learning and focusing just on enrichment and assessment and transition into next year. So I think you will see that. I think our parents will see that, but we've just started those discussions right now and I want to be clear that, you know, our school year goes through June 11th and we intend to serve students through June 11th, but we will likely change our remote learning as it goes along. Hope that answers the question.
It does, thank you.
And trustee Smith has a question?
Thanks. And, and this is a bit of a follow-up to trustee Decker's question that made me think of it. And then let me just preface it too by saying that we as the, the school board have gotten lots and lots and lots and lots of public input for this and we really appreciate it from both parents and community members and staff and everyone. And it's, it's, it's kept me busy. It's kept us all busy, but we really appreciate it. It gives us a real good idea of what the bulk of the community is. But relating to the question that trustee Decker had brought up regarding the costs, several of the correspondences that I've seen anyway have mentioned, well, you know, the schools could be saving money, the school system is probably saving money because of no travel for sports or utility costs will be less or I don't know, many, many other things. I was wondering either if Rob, you or Pat might maybe could either just kind of touch on that? And if there's, and I know there's a much bigger answer and I don't want to go into the whole how, how school funding works, but I do want to just kind of touch on it's not as easy as one big bucket that we're dealing with and everything, you know, the savings go directly to the, to the spending. Could you just like mention something about that, please?
Yes, I think I can and I'll, I'll do sort of the layman's answer because I, I don't have the experience or the expertise that Pat has in school finance, but Pat will correct me if I'm, if I say anything incorrect. We, we anticipated that, we, we heard fairly early on that, that the district will be a recipient of some finances from the CARES Act. And again, that's from the national level. Some of the things we've chatted about though is, you know, we have a long time to spend that money. It, it doesn't have to be spent until September of 2021 and, and to trustee Decker's point, we don't really know what some of those costs are gonna be. So, you know, it's in our best interest to save as much as that money that, as we can in order to potentially use that on future costs for any of the variety of things we've chatted about, like personal protective equipment. So we've got some CARES Act money that's coming into the district. We, and it is correct, there are some expenses that, that we are not incurring at this point. And what we've encouraged our budget managers and our administrators to do is, you know, wherever possible, don't, don't spend money. We don't need to buy things right now. We can carry over money, which is something that's a little different that the state legislature approved a few years ago. We can actually carry some money forward past this school year and, and we're encouraging our budget managers to be real careful with spending and, and any money that is perceived savings at this point will be carried forward in, in anticipation of other perceived costs that might come up in the fall. With regards to activity trips and transportation, I, I do agree with you. We're, we aren't, we aren't spending money on activity trips. Pat McHugh has been working with Beach Transportation to sort of renegotiate their contract. And we will bring that to a future board meeting to discuss the details of that. Just want to be clear, in, in that renegotiation, our, our priority is to make sure that the, that the drivers are still being paid so that, that we're not losing any bus drivers in this, in this process. But that's one of the items that they've discussed is activity trips and, and not, not having to pay for those because there are no activity trips at this point. So all, all I can say, and Pat may want to add something to my comments, but we're being really careful with the end of year monies. We're gonna carry forward as much as we can because we, we know that there'll be some unforeseen expenses. A, a good example related to transportation, one of the considerations for fall planning is there's a recommendation that wherever possible, you have one student per seat on any bus. That's gonna create a bunch of extra bus routes. And you, the trustees understand that the transportation fund is a different fund, but you know, where we can save money and perhaps use it so that we're not overloading our transportation fund, we want to do so. So I'm gonna stop there and hopefully I didn't say anything incorrectly, Pat, or if you want to add anything.
Pat, do you have anything you'd like to?
Sure. And, and no, that was very good. I don't have much to add. We have, we have been messaging an effort to try and save to the extent we can. And when, when we think about it, the general fund is, is 90% salaries and benefits and and the portion we're really talking about saving and carrying forward because we are paying staff is, is minimal. And, and we do recognize that we're gonna have added costs as trustee Decker mentioned. And in that anticipation, we're hoping to carry forward funds through the multi-district agreements and other means into next year to help, to help with anticipated additional costs as we plan for this opening in the fall and what it might look like. I think the only other thing I'd mention that in addition to what Rob covered very well is just the flexibility that's available in the transportation fund for this limited time under that emergency policy that the board adopted and, and the opportunity within that fund to purchase things like those hotspots and, and other benefits and, and devices that are beneficial to students and their, and their learning. So we'll be looking at the CARES Act, the transportation fund, what we can set aside as all being available to help us address these, these anticipated additional expenditures that were, were, that are coming down the road. Hopefully that answers the question.
Yes, thank you.
And trustee Oldperson has a question?
Hi, yes, thank you Chair Holland. My question for you, Dr. Watson, is that we do have specific populations, like the public comments stated earlier, who are vulnerable. And I, I know that speaking with different staff members who've reached out to me individually, they haven't been able to reach certain families and students and I'm worried about those that are gonna fall through the crack with continued with remote learning. And I want to make sure that we as a district are taking extra care of those families and those students who need that help. As a parent of MCPS students, I really see the struggle that a student can have with remote learning, but I can also see one of my sons thriving with remote learning. And so I just want to know what are we as a district doing to help those students if we continue with remote learning, who actually needs more of a one-on-one with different people versus the one-on-one in a Zoom classroom?
Yeah, so I can, I can, I can provide a couple of things and then I would ask if any of our team that's working on remote learning, either Elise or Karen or Julie want to add, but what I would tell you is that we, we recognize that. We've actually asked our principals to keep track of that, which families, which students have been not engaging and then working within their teams, within their school to figure out ways that we can engage those kids. So it, it's not unlike during the school year, during, during a normal time when we're open. We have kids in school that don't engage either and we have processes in place. I think the board has heard about these before, but we've got, you know, the multi-tier systems of support, we call it MTSS. That process is in place to really identify the kids that are not engaging and then work with those families to figure out what the barrier is. And that's happening in remote learning right now. I think that Karen spoke to you about on Tuesday about a situation with a student that wasn't engaging and, and what we found out is that once the student had some one-on-one time with, with their, with their, with their teacher and that one-on-one time was consistent, although it was virtual during, that it was consistent that as soon as that happened, then the sort of the light turned on and, and, and that student started engaging in other activities. So I, I would tell you that, you know, we're, we're not, we're not over yet. We haven't figured it out. There are students that are still not engaging.
So for your birthday, unless you want something else, we'll pay for the first month of insurance. So you won't have to pay for insurance until
I think there's somebody that's not needed.
June 1st. And then we could make a incentive deal that as long as you're living.
There we go. So I, I am, I am completely confident in the, in the power of our staff and what they're currently doing. I'm also confident in that they're not, they're not done yet. They, they are also frustrated by some kids that aren't engaging. They're trying to figure out new ways to, to re-engage them. One really good idea we heard from another district is calling a friend of that student and saying, hey, you know, I haven't heard from so-and-so, can you have them email me or, or engage in, in a Zoom call? I've seen a lot of creativity, but the other thing that I think trustee Lorenz brought up, which is probably a good suggestion is we've also considered bringing some small groups in at the end of the year as we move along or even before that and trying to figure out what we can do to serve those kids that really need more in-person engagement. And, and that again, we're gonna have to make sure we have our safety protocols in place before we do that.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the teachers and the staff of MCPS and everybody who commented and reached out to the trustees and myself.
And just to let everyone who's attending this meeting virtually, just to let you know, if you make a comment in chat and you want to have that comment considered during public comment, public comment is going to be coming up after we have a motion on the table. So be sure to repeat your comments you're making in chat so that they can become part of public comment. And with with that being said, are there any other trustee questions? Or did Julie, Elise or Karen want to add anything?
No, I, this is Elise. I would just echo everything that Dr. Watson just said and I think really underscore that our teachers are really practicing those good practices around how to engage our children and really identifying those that are not and, and problem solving together as a collective grade-level team to collaborate and identify ways to engage our families. And I think that, that effort and, and what our teachers are putting into trying to engage our kids is really commendable.
And Julie indicated she doesn't have anything else to add. So not hearing any, not seeing any other questions from trustees. Is there any indication that there are questions from the trustees attending by phone? Oh, I'm sorry, great. Trustee Decker, yes, I did see that and I just didn't scroll down far enough. So trustee Decker has another question?
Thank you. I think it's, it makes a lot of sense that our questions and our discussion has moved into the realm of how we're going to continue to tweak remote learning, should we stay in remote learning? Because of course, our, our usual interest as a district is 100% on trying to make sure that we're providing a great education experience to all kids. Our decision today, of course, is based on something that is at a little bit different level, which is really strange position to be in as a board, which is that we're trying to make a decision about health and safety of our, of our community and our larger community and then how we go forward around our education responsibility in connection to that. So I guess a lot of the questions that, that we have had, and this goes back to my question about financing, is you know, we are, certainly there are people across the district who are working so hard and have been to get remote learning up and off the ground. But it would be, it's my understanding, and I would have made this assumption before, that that picture looks really different from school to school. And that at schools that typically have higher needs and, and higher poverty rates and more kids who are transient in their population in and out of the school during normal circumstances, I think it's not like a shock to say that those schools are probably struggling harder during this crisis as well. And so to kind of push this conversation about resources and, and meeting need a little bit further, I just want to ask about any ways that we might be able to leverage more resources toward our title schools or toward our schools that have more challenge around this or how we're able to use data about who is and isn't connecting. And just so that as we make a decision based on health, we also are reassuring folks that things are not gonna stay the way they are and that we're going to be pushing more resource toward the places where they're most needed.
Yeah, thank you trustee Decker for the question. I, I do believe we have and we will continue that. And I, I would ask Julie to chime in, but as you're aware, during a, during an open situation, we have extra staff available at our title schools. Those staff are still available, even though we're in remote learning and they're, they are helping kids in different ways. Those kids that attend our title schools. We also have related to McKinney-Vento and our families in transition, we have resources and staff available in those schools related to that, families in transition and, and they are providing services to kids right now, even though we're in a remote learning situation. And we can do better and we can do more, but I, I do want it to be known that I believe that we do have extra resources and those resources are being directed that way right now. But Julie, would you add anything to that?
Yes, thank you. I would just add that Dr. Watson is absolutely correct.
I, I do.
That those schools that do qualify as school-wide Title I schools are those additional staff members going above and beyond. They're conducting small group instruction in addition to the whole class instruction to support those kids and reaching out to families who are less connected in the classroom, in the remote classroom. Our family resource center and fit coordinators are also contacting families regularly, trying to keep a bead on that transient nature and trying to keep them connected to their home school for the remainder of the year, even if they've moved out of the neighborhood, which is key. I also met this week with our Title I elementary school principals about some ideas for summer programming specifically for Title I schools as we already do have funding set aside for summer programming to connect. um funding set aside for summer programming um to connect students at all levels K-12. Um, we aren't sure what summer program is going to look at, look like across the district, but we will go above and beyond that with additional funding for those Title I schools.
Any other questions from any trustees? And I will let everyone note um that trustee Wake had to leave the meeting because of a time issue. So I, she sent me some comments that I will make on her behalf as well, although she won't be voting on the motion. And also just a reminder for all who are listening or participating to mute your your microphones or your phones unless you are have asked to um say something and are doing so. So thanks for doing that. And it looks like someone's muted, someone who's muted. So it looks like some one was trying to mute their phone. So with that, are there any other trustee questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation from the administration is as follows, and Dr. Watson, I would ask you to give me some help with the last language because my pen ran out of ink. So note to self, have two pens whenever you're in a virtual meeting, so you don't have to run around. In any case, so the recommendation is that there is a motion to declare an unforeseen emergency as set forth in Montana Code Annotated Title 20, Chapter 9, Part 8, to become effective, to become immediately effective and to continue through June 30th, 2020. Um, that and that the motion is would be based on COVID-19 risks in recognition that the governor's waiver of student instruction time will expire on May 7th, and in recognition that the governor's April 22nd, 2020 directive implicating executive orders 2-2020 and 3-2020 specify that elected school boards and their districts who adopt their own declaration of emergency will continue to receive all state funding, including transportation funding. And Dr. Watson, if you could add in um the in addition to continue under the remote learning plan in the way you'd like it to be worded in the in any potential motion, since I wasn't able to write that language down.
Yes, so in addition, uh the trustees would allow our schools to continue with our remote learning program for the remainder of the current school year.
Thank you. And so trustee Lorenzen wants to make a motion. Trustee Lorenzen, would you go ahead and um identify the motion you'd like to make?
Uh, okay, I I move that the Board of Trustees declare an unforeseen emergency as set forth in Montana Code Annotated Title 20, Chapter 9, Part 8, to become immediately effective and to continue through June 30th, 2020. In addition, the Board of Trustees will allow the administration to continue with the MCPS Remote Learning Plan through the end of the year.
And there is a second, actually two seconds by trustee Oldperson and trustee Decker. And now is the time for board discussion to be followed by public comment. Is there any board discussion?
Marsha, this is Rob. Just could could we clarify in trustee Lorenzen's motion that it's the end of the school year rather than the end of the year?
Oh, um, would
Yeah, that's that's fine, as corrected.
Okay, so the final portion reads would allow the administration to continue with the MCPS Remote Learning Plan through the end of the school year. And trustee Kendall has a comment. Trustee Kendall?
Yes, thank you. I had to find my microphone there. Um, I do have a comment, and I'll try to keep it short, but I I want to acknowledge all the work that's going on um in the district. It's it's such uh an unexpected situation that we're in, and the alternatives are not great. And from everything we can tell, things are just um going as well as we could have hoped, I think. Um, going through the public comment, which as trustee Smith indicated, was very, very considerable, more than I um, more than I expected. Um, but there's a lot of good stuff in there. Um, people delivered some really, really thoughtful comments um that I think provide a lot of um creative ideas and raising issues that um perhaps s- some people might not have thought of. So all that is really appreciated. Um, I found myself feeling really torn um between two less than ideal solutions. And the best thing that I was able to come up with was that there are so many unknowns in this that we just have to go with um our our own best judgment based on um, you know, the evidence as we know it. And as we don't know it yet, um, we will know more as time goes by. Um, and that is reassuring, because the more we know, the more likely we will to get the target that we're trying to get, um, which is the best education possible for each child in the district. Um, one thing that I that I do want to bring up, I think this is my last board meeting. Um, so I want to go out with a little bit of a bang. One thing I do want to say is that I have experience working for the Health Department and um a a nonprofit organization, Families First. They do fantastic work with families and if and I don't want people to feel like they need to despair right now because of the amazing resources we have in Missoula County. Um, there are lots and lots of resources for nutrition and mental health and parenting ideas. I remember when I had little kids and I went to Families First um in desperation, how do I deal with two little boys? And I got such great ideas that I would never have come up with myself. So I just want to acknowledge that we have a lot of expertise and support in the community. Nobody is, nobody has to be alone in this. There are great resources on the MCPS website and on the Health Department website and the city county COVID-19 website. Um, also, I did get an email from a friend who said um that he misses the tutoring that he was doing in the schools. Um, and I wondered if it might be possible for principals to reach out or teachers to reach out to the volunteers that have been tutoring and get some extra help from them, knowing that they know how to do that tutoring and can be um an extension of our own resources at a low cost. So um, those are the the thoughts that I wanted to make sure that um that our community knows about. It's so important that people know that they're not alone. That was the hardest part about the public comments that I read, people feeling isolated and alone. It's not necessary. We have resources and people can um can find them, and many of them are absolutely free, especially right now. Thank you so much.
And trustee Decker has a comment?
Thanks. Um, I am glad that the motion that was made is the motion that was made. Um, I have been eager to uh be able to vote on this question and um put our community's fears to rest about whether staff and students and family members of vulnerable students were going to be expected to put themselves at increased risk. So I'm thankful that we're going to be able to put the community's mind, I think, to rest about that, once we take a vote on that really serious question. Um, our community has worked so hard over the past six weeks at great um, great cost um to individual families and to our whole community um to flatten the curve. And um people feel very strongly about maintaining as safe of a um path forward that keeps vulnerable people um out of harm's way as much as we possibly can. And so I'm glad that we're here now to do this. I do want to say, though, that although we are all reeling from this pandemic and what it is causing in terms of upheaval in our lives, we're all um experiencing the same hurricane, but we were not all in the same boat before this hurricane started. Some people were in yachts, some people were in tiny little sailboats, and some people were clinging already to tiny pieces of flotsam in the ocean. And when the storm came, it did not have the same impact on everyone. Um, when Katrina hit in um New Orleans, the children who were displaced from their schools from the highest needs regions um suffered for years from that disruption. And the disparities of um mental health and um you know, I I use grade level achievement only as one indicator of how well kids are doing. Those things um were exacerbated tremendously. And so the response to this situation really begins here and making a decision to continue with remote learning, if that's the way that we vote. Um, that certainly does not make anybody's job easier going forward. Um, we have a tremendous task ahead as a community and as a district to try to meet the needs of those folks who, some of whom were already clinging to flotsam in the ocean before this storm came along. And I really do hope that we bring together people who can help make those plans, including parents, including principals, including teachers on the ground who are working in title schools, bring people together to help plan for what's going to actually meet the needs of those kids as we go forward. Um, I hope that we are going to be able to recognize that to to move forward as a community does not mean that everyone is going to get the same sort of thing. Because if you're in a yacht, you don't need the same sort of thing right now as someone who's clinging to a piece of flotsam. And we need to leverage our resources that we do have um to get more in the hands of those who need more. Um, and I strongly, I just can't voice that more strongly, that this decision about health and safety is the first of many that we're going to need to make to move forward equitably as a district.
Is there, excuse me, any other trustee who'd like to make public comment? I'm looking in chat, and if either Ray or Hatton can let me know if there's any trustee on the phone who wants to make public comments?
At this point, there are no phone lines unmuted.
Okay, thanks. So I too would like to make public comment.
Marsha, it looked like Isaac also wanted to comment in chat.
Okay, I I didn't scroll down far enough. I apologize. I'm trying to kind of multitask here. Um, Isaac, if you want to make trustee comment, please do.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, like, on behalf of the Sentinel students, thank you guys for putting so much thought into this and trying to make the best of this situation and for keeping all of the students in any situation that they might be in in mind during this process. Thank you.
Thanks, Isaac. Thank you for that. And if I could make um public or trustee comment as well, we already have people who are superheroes, parents, students, everyone in the district and in our community. And it it's almost unimaginable to ask them to become super, super superheroes by moving us back to what the old version of learning was in this time, when there still are so many uncertain answers. So I just want to say thanks to everyone. And I appreciate that we get to hear parent voices, student voices, staff voices, administrations' voices, trustee voices, community member voices, and we want to encourage those voices to continue, because I think as both trustee Kendall and particularly trustee Decker indicated, these working toward how education will be delivered in the future is an ongoing concern, and we do want to try to do it right. So I just want to say thanks to everyone who's been part of this process. And if there's no other comment, I just wanted to let you know that trustee Wake indicated that assuming that the motion as amended would be made, that she would wholeheartedly support it and was um sorry she couldn't be here to vote. And with that being said, if there are no other trustee comments, we'd be taking public comment, as I indicated, either unmute your mic or your phone, or indicate you want to make comment in chat. And I did see that Katie Leahy had made a comment earlier before public comment was being made. So I don't know if she wants to make that public comment in this section, so it's captured as public comment. Um, or she could just type in and I can read it for her. And it looks like Bob Carter wants to make public comments. So um, Mr. Carter, if you want to go ahead, and we're trying to keep the comments to three minutes from the public. Um, Bob Carter, did you want to make public comment?
Marsha, he's typing it into the chat.
Oh, okay. So Jason Emery, do you want to make your public comment, or do you want me to read it out loud? Let me, I'm trying to scroll down. Apologies, it's
Hello?
Hello, is this Jason Emery?
It is.
Okay, thanks. Um, any public comment? We would love to hear from you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a short one. Thank you for the time. Um, I'd just first like to start off saying that um, you know, MCPS has done an excellent job. Um, appreciate all the efforts, you know, as a parent of several students in the district. Um, you know, it's a bad situation, but I think it's been made much smoother by everyone's efforts um and a lot of different angles. Um, I agree with the decision to uh keep the schools closed for the remainder of the year. I think that's a good public safety decision. Um, I don't think there's a reasonable way to do that um with what's still going on and a lot of the unknowns that we have. Um, my, the rest of my comment is, um, I personally, from our family, would like to see the school year ended early. Um, and that's due to the fact that I believe that the students and and just judging by our students, that they probably are reaching the end of what they're going to reasonably learn in this current model. Uh, the current model, while it's working, um, as I'm sure you're all well aware, isn't quite the same as working um in class with a teacher, you know, to help them. And uh I believe it's added extra stress um for our family, trying to keep on top of um ourselves working remotely, keeping the students on track, helping them as much as we can. And, you know, I think at some point we're going to get, you know, we've we've kind of gotten to the point now where, you know, I think we should be nearing the end of this. It would allow families to regroup and um kind of plan what the summer is going to look for. And I think it'd probably potentially give MCPS a little bit more time to plan on what this is going to maybe look like for next year. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bob Carter's mic is not working, so I will read his public comment. Um, just give me a second to scroll back up. So his comment is, I agree that a majority of students are doing well as well as can be expected with remote learning, and I respect and understand that the teachers have their hands full, keeping their primary group of students fully engaged. And some teachers also have young children at home, which makes this even more challenging for them. Additionally, we all know that there are some students that require extra attention and that extra attention requires a lot of additional time from teachers. My comment is this, I wonder if there are staff available that could act as a hot team, hot shot team. Sorry, I just have to scroll down more. Hot shot team that is able to take some of those students who need additional attention and take them off the plate of their teachers and allow the hot shot team to focus on that smaller group of students. That hot shot team could also help manage the volunteers that trustee Kendall mentioned. Thank you for your time and attention, and let's not stop serving. Let's not stop at serving just most students. Let's continue to set the bar as high as possible. Let's continue to set the bar as high as possible. Respectfully, Bob Carter. And then Andrea Hopkins asked me to read this comment aloud. Many volunteers would love to be able to help from home, foster grandparents, and our SVP tutors have a lot to give students who need the one-on-one help. And then Suzanne Bancale, I didn't know if you want me to read this or if you'd like to make public comment now. Ms. Bancale, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. I'll go ahead and read it since I'm not hearing. Oh, thank you. She just answered. So her comment is, how do we help our graduates feel like they get some closure to all their school years to say goodbyes and to feel finished? And then Jennifer Robichaud has a comment, so please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, Jennifer Robichaud, R O B I C H A U D. First, I just wanted to thank trustee Decker for recognizing that not everyone was in the same type of vessel in this hurricane. That's an important consideration for the board. Um, trustee Decker is speaking to equity, um, and I do applaud her advocacy for students. Um, next, uh, while I applaud the efforts of teachers who are attempting to engage students, my experience is that, um, high school students are slipping through the cracks. And I would encourage the superintendent to direct his attention to the high school population and work with the principals and staff to develop an action plan that is directed specifically to the needs of high school students. Um, I would also caution the school board against using the strategy superintendent Watson mentioned about contacting the front of a student who's not engaging. Perhaps I misunderstood the method there, but I would just caution MCPS against breaching confidentiality of students in the district in using that strategy. Uh, lastly, I would echo Mr. Emery's comments about students reaching the end of what they can retain uh, during remote learning. And just remind the board that, uh, remote learning and remote learning during pandemic are not synonyms. Thank you for taking my public comment.
Thank you. And, um, Scott Chook or Shook wants to make a comment followed by Fawn Tuhie. So, um, Mr. Chook, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly, please, um, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair Holland, and thank you, uh, trustees for giving me a moment to speak. I'd like to, uh, commend you on your leadership throughout this. Dr. Watson, I'd like to commend you for your compassionate leadership. Uh, and I want to reiterate what trustee Decker said about being in the same storm in different boats. Uh, as a teacher at CS Porter Middle School, uh, it's been my observation that the, the gaps that we knew of existing already, uh, achievement gaps and, uh, economic gaps and lots of gaps, those, those have been, uh, magnified and exacerbated, uh, by the current crisis. Uh, I think we're doing what it takes to, uh, to, to deal with that in this crisis mode, but I hope that, uh, having those, uh, issues magnified by this, I hope that we continue to, uh, to pay attention and to deal with that as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chook, could you say your first and last name and spell your last name and let me know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, just for those folks who are participating by phone, who may not be able to see your name in chat?
Sure. It's Scott Chook, C H O O K.
Thank you. And now public comment from Sean, sorry, Fawn Tuhie, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for letting me make, um, public comment. I agree that we are not prepared to go back to school at this time and that there are a lot of things that we would have to do to be prepared and get the schools prepared to be able to follow the social distance guidelines right now. But although, um, this was said before, many children are not necessarily getting what they need right now out of this, um, distance learning. You know, some children don't have technology at home, some children don't have parent help at home. I am a teacher with Head Start and I'm struggling reaching out to the children in my classrooms that may not have what they need necessarily. But I also have a high schooler and I feel, I agree with Mr. Emery that we need to end school early. We need to just give it one more week and end the year because those seniors, they are not learning anything right now. And I feel that especially for the seniors, we need to let them go. If they're passing their classes, let them graduate and then plan some kind of graduation, um, commencement, whatever the, the school district can plan for them and plan that. I just feel that the school board needs to be aware that these high schoolers are really either A, falling through the cracks, or they're not learning anything at home and that they need to just be done and the school year needs to end. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thanks. And Ms. Tuhie, if you, I don't know if you said your first and last name and spelled.
My name is Fawn, F A W N, and my last name is Tuhie, T U H Y.
Thank you. Just the folks that are participating by telephone can't necessarily access chat. So thank you for doing that. Is there any other, it looks like, um, Ty or Thai Williams? I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, but you'd like to make a comment? And if you could spell your first name for us?
My name is Thai, T H A I. The last name is Williams, W I L L I A M S. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to, um, address you and thanks for all you all are doing during these unusual times. Um, I spoke to you the other day when we had the, um, business meeting about, um, taking into consideration all of our students in particular. I work with students with special needs, so of course I want to, uh, to reach out to make sure that, you know, we're thinking about students who have compromised immune systems and thinking about students and staff and the need for physical contact that we have within our classrooms. Um, I know within my class, I have to work with students using a variety of different prompts from a prompting hierarchy, everything from verbal prompting up to full physical assistance and able to complete activities. So knowing that if my class goes back, I will have to have full physical contact with my students, not only in order for them to learn, but also because I have a number, number of students with behavioral disorders who are aggressive. You know, they bite, they spit, and they will stick, stick their nails in us. So I just want to make sure that when considering going back either now in the fall, that we take into consideration those staff members who work with students who have those types of needs and who we have to have those types of physical contact with. Um, in addition to that, the other day, Dr. Watson addressed the need for, um, possibly expanding summer school once we return to school and not only expanding it for possibly this year, but for years to come. So I would like, um, the school board and the school district to also consider the need to extend, um, uh, what's called E S Y, extended school year. And that is, um, kind of like a summer school that we have for students with special needs who show regression. Um, so I anticipate that a number of our students, um, will, a disproportionate number of our students will show regression after these absences. So I believe that we'll have a need to extend extended school year and broaden it to include more students. We've also haven't had a number of students who haven't had services, um, directly addressed to them. It's kind of hard to get, to do physical therapy, um, with a student who has a physical impairment over, um, Google Hangouts. So I'd also like the district to consider the possible need for compensatory services for students who have not received, um, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, or if they've been in remote learning and have not had the same access to education as other students due to a lack of internet service. I have one student who has not received equal access to education because he didn't have the internet or a hotspot for over six weeks. And so when we look at equality of education, and we've addressed this with the students in general ed as, as well, there's a definite, um, inequality of education there. Thank you so much for letting me speak and again, thanks for your consideration and for all you're doing for our community and our students.
Thank you for those public comments. I see that Daniel McGee also would like to make public comment. If you can just state your first and last name since it's pretty straightforward spelling.
All right. I, I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, as a, a student of, or a parent of a student, uh, that goes to Hellgate Elementary and is going to be transitioning to Big Sky High School this next year, uh, one of the things that we've, we've had really good success in our family with the remote learning that Hellgate Elementary's provided. One thing that my eighth grade daughter, um, is starting to get a little anxious about is the, you know, when it comes to starting school back up and would encourage, you know, I mean, I don't continue to participate, but thinking about early engagement for some of those high school freshmen, um, I know that that's something that she hasn't seen any of her friends for close to seven weeks now. And that other than through video chatting, uh, and that's a difficult thing, especially for, I know for young teenage girls especially. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. You're doing a fabulous job preparing us for it. So keep up the good work and, um, look forward to a, a good start for her year, uh, her freshman year. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. And Annie Belcourt, um, would like to make public comment. And Ms. Belcourt, if you don't mind saying your first and last name and spelling your last name for our minutes.
Sure. Um, my name's Annie Belcourt. Um, Belcourt is spelled B E L C O U R T. And I just wanted to, you know, thank all of you for all of the work that you're doing and the thoughtfulness that is being put into this motion and, um, for, you know, our students and our communities. And I really appreciate the time and effort and thought that has gone into, you know, these decisions and these motions. Um, just a couple of, you know, quick comments. I, um, would like to just, um, you know, definitely support the motion to continue remote, remote learning and, um, to, to cancel in-class, um, instruction for the remainder of the school year and, and commend you on that decision. And also, um, wanted to, um, commend Dr. Watson and, um, many of the speakers, including, um, Ms. Decker's, um, discussion of inequity. And I think that those are really important points. Two, um, factors I just wanted to kind of reiterate. I know that there's a plan and, um, resources available for mental health, but I know I teach at the university and I, um, have seen a lot of mental health issues coming up, including a lot of, um, anxiety around this pandemic and kind of future course. And I think that comes through in some of the comments that have been provided today too. But, you know, the more that we can do to support mental health at this time, um, given what a problem this is for our state and, um, in general. But, you know, in this time, um, it's, it's particularly important that we provide resources for mental health support for all students. Um, and I think that that's probably true for staff and, um, and the larger community and parents as well. One technical thing, I think, um, you know, it is a struggle and I, I know others have said this, but their remote instruction for parents especially who are working and may only have one computer or that sort of thing. And, um, one things I would just encourage, um, teachers to consider is just streamlined, streamlining, um, to, to the degree that they can. The, the use of many multiple different platforms for instruction. I know, um, for example, like we've struggled some with our math instruction because there's different apps and then we forget the passwords. And, I mean, it's, it's something we need to just keep a list of or what have you, but, um, but, you know, I use a computer every day and I know, um, you know, I've had to kind of really, um, dig in and learn different things, which is not a bad thing per se, but I know that not everybody has the resources and capability to do those things. So just would like to kind of, um, the more that we can do to make it easier for students because, you know, this has taken an emotional toll on a lot of us and including our, our children. So, um, but thanks again for allowing me to speak and I, I thank you for, um, hopefully passing this decision to, um, to forego in-person meetings for the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Let me get back to chat. Are there any other public comments on the motion before the board? And either Hatton or Ray, if you can let me know if anyone who's listening by phone has indicated they would like to make public comment.
Uh, just a reminder for those that are joining via phone. If you would like to unmute, you need to press star six on your keypad. At this point, it doesn't appear there is any desire for public comment from those joining on the phone.
Thank you. And I don't see any additional public comment requests coming in through the chat box. So at this point, we are now ready to vote on the second motion. There's some, one named Kathleen Devlin who just popped into the screen. I don't know if she wants to make public comment.
Oh, no.
Okay, um, see no other public comment. Then as I was saying, we're at the point where we will be voting on the motion before the board. And so it's fairly long. I, it's also found in chat, so I'm not going to read it all in its entirety. But all those trustees in favor of the motion before the board, please, um, either unmute your phone or type in yes or why on in the chat box.
Vogel is yes.
Oh, and trustee Wake did have to leave. So, um, there are now 10 trustees voting, so let me count to make sure. So there are 10 trustees voting. All trustees voted yes. So the motion, um, passes and that, we will move forward under, um, the actions that are described in the motion and in the, in the language of the motion as well. And with that, I do want to say that we will take public comment at the end of the meeting, which we are at now, on non-agenda items. But I meant to mention this earlier and forgot. But, um, trustee Newbold and trustee Kendall, your last meeting is actually May 12th. We hope you will be there virtually as we would like an opportunity to, um, have you participate in that last meeting and also to say thank you to you for your service. So just a reminder that in, at that meeting, we will also be swearing in our new trustees. And so that will happen, I believe, at the end of the May 12th meeting. So thank you to those who have served and to trustee Vogel, who will continue to serve. And with that, we would entertain any public comment on a non-agenda item. And I'm watching in chat to see if anyone has a non-agenda item request to make public comment. I'm not seeing anything. And either Hatton or Ray, is there any indication from someone on a phone that they would like to make public comment on a non-agenda item?
Don't see any.
Okay, thank you. So I want to thank everyone, I mean, everyone. There were a lot of people participating in this, um, special school board meeting, um, either by listening or making public comment to the staff, to superintendent Watson, to his cabinet. Thank you to everyone for, um, making sure that we take care of our students and that they, and our staff and that they are all foremost in our hopes that we can move toward, um, a, a different but normal way of public education. So thanks to everybody so much. And our next regular board meeting, as I indicated, will be on May 12th. Thank you. And I'll go ahead and close this meeting out. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chair Holland. I'll wait just a few moments and then I'll end the live stream and I'll end the recording.
Thank you. Yeah, you just need to wait.